Alright, so that's recording and now I've hit go live. So it'll start any second now. I don't think I really need glasses. Alright, we're live here at the Celine post office in the Ann Arbor. Celine Music Center. We got a nice little place that destroyed here. Just trying to cram everything in here and we're here with Matthew Onst. Celine City Council candidate. Did I say that right by the way?
Yeah, Onst. I essentially tell people it's like my last name technically starts with a U, but I put an A there because I like to be first in line.
Okay. Took me a second. Alright, so we're kind of wrapping up our coverage here as we get close to the election. Let me ask you a question. It has nothing to do with any of the things I've been asked people about, but I did ask a version of this question to Brett Paulington yesterday. What is something that that you've learned about Celine City Council, the way it operates? That surprises you, whether it impresses you or disappoints you or whatever. But what's something that you've learned that you're thinking? That you didn't know before? You had no idea? I'm guessing there's some because you're a young guy, so.
Yeah.
How long you been watching this kind of stuff?
Yeah, I mean definitely some of the things that surprised me was how little they like have in terms of like authority. What they can and can't do. However, there's something that you just told me that they have the right to put whatever they want on the ballot without having to do signatures.
Right.
So I'm like, that's something that I didn't know and that's great to know because now it's like, oh, all the things that like. I would like to be put up for citizens sort of input can be put on there without having to go through the arbitrary signature process.
Let's get every give everybody in town a vote from home button and they can just press the button.
Right. Yeah, I mean, that's how some countries do it. Like they just like go through a verification process and then you can just like vote.
Yeah.
Remotely.
So let's, how old are you again?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, by far the youngest person on the ballot. Why at twenty-two years old or twenty-one, whenever this started, did you decide I want to run for Celine City Council?
For me, my family has lived in the city for generations. And so even though I am the youngest candidate, I am actually part of one of the oldest families.
Yeah.
That is Ben and Celine. We were here back when it was the village.
Yeah.
Of Celine. And so, you know, hearing everything that's sort of gone on since then and sort of like the hardships that my family has sort of had to go through to. To sort of stay here is sort of what pushed me to run, you know, like the the pricing out of the people that sort of built the city from the ground up. And you know, my my immediate family, you know, my my mom and dad, we lost. Our home during the two thousand eight financial crash and that sort of forced us to sort of move about the country, you know, chasing opportunity as you know, you hear. Many families did at that time and are still doing to this day and you know, so. That was sort of how it was all the way up until I graduated high school and I moved back here in two thousand twenty-one. During the pandemic because you know, the city always meant something to me and you know, I wanna. I want to keep that dream alive for you know, younger people just starting out wanting to stay in the city they they called home and.
So what age did you leave the city? I know we talked about this before, but.
Yeah, it was.
You were fairly young, right?
It was before third grade.
Before third grade. And when did you come back? Just in the last?
Once I graduated high school.
When, which is?
Two thousand twenty-one.
Okay, and. Well, so you've been back for a few years now. That's plenty. But how did this, how did, how did you remember the city? You know, from the age? Of, you know, from third grade to graduating high school. How did, how did, how did the city exist in your brain at the time when, when, when you decided to come back?
I mean, I decided to come back because it always meant something to me and like of all the places that I've lived, it's definitely been the best.
Yeah.
Like living in places that don't have as many opportunities and amenities and. You know, life that Celine has, it it's always what sort of drawn me here and my family back for generations.
Did you have teachers or friends that you remembered from back then that you reconnected with?
Yeah, I have a few. They have all since sort of moved on and done their own thing. But yeah, I mean, I do have a few connected individuals that we still get together with and know it's mainly people that my grandparents know.
Yeah.
That I just, you know, sort of knew by by proxy of that, so we always see them.
Your grandmother was Miss Celine?
My grandmother hosted Miss Celine.
Hosted Miss Celine?
Yeah, and same with my, my aunt as well. They're very involved in that process.
Okay, wait, who's your grandmother?
Patricia Onst.
Patricia Onst. Was there an Onst? I think I saw an Onst name that was a former Miss Celine or second or first runner up or something like that.
Could possibly have been, might have been my sister Kendra too. They always did the pageants and stuff. Her and my cousin Amanda Coy were always sort of doing.
Oh, Amanda's your cousin? Okay, yeah. Great twirler. I mean, she's really good at that. And I saw her speak. And I don't know, I don't know if it's her mom who taught her or the pageant people who taught her, but a really good public speaker. And it's impressive. A lot of the twirlers were really good at the public speaking part of of. What, you know, the pageant and beyond that, being Miss Celine, speaking in public, addressing city council and stuff like that.
Yeah.
So why government? Why, why? First of all, before we even get to that, what do you do? You're all dressed up. And you're, you said you were assistant manager of the bank of which bank again, Flagstaff?
Yeah, so I do work in finance and because I cannot sort of say them publicly because you know.
Sure.
Cannot participate in stuff.
Really? Even at Flagstaff?
Yep, so I just want to make sure that I'm covering all my bases and you know, sort of not disclosing information.
Okay.
Could come back, but I am an assistant manager at a, at a financial institution.
So. Why, why government? Why do you want to do that?
It was something that I always had a passion and draw for, you know, I'm in finance because I like to help people achieve their financial success. And you know, I, I just recently came from hosting a sort of financial literacy course at the University of Michigan Dearborn. For a bunch of the university students on, you know, best financial practices and how to sort of achieve your financial goals. And what you want to do, so helping people achieve their success has always been a passion of mine, so I do. Really want to sort of help people, you know, sort of remain in Celine and any way possible that I can do that is. Is what I have a passion in.
That's, that's a tough issue with the, we went over this yesterday with Brett too. And what are you hearing in terms of, like, are you doing much knocking on doors?
Oh, yeah, I'm doing that too.
What are you hearing from residents of Celine about what matters to them?
So we are definitely knocking on doors in communities that are being affected by things they're seeing around them. I'm a firm believer that, you know, I don't claim to know everything. I believe residents are the experts in their own lives because they live it every day. So instead of claiming to have everything, I go to them and ask you, what is something that's happening in your life? That you want city council to address or that could possibly be addressed by city council? So one thing that's come up a lot is the water issue.
Yeah.
Still, a lot of people are being affected by it.
Yeah.
Luckily, that is supposed to be slated to be completed in two thousand twenty-six. However, we all know government timelines are, you know.
Wait, oh, wait, the wa- the water issue? It's supposed, or the wastewater issue?
The wastewater.
The wastewater thing, yeah. I'm glad it's not the wastewater that's contributing to the brown water in my tap.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, so that's slated to be completed in two thousand twenty-six, but we all have a government timelines.
Right, well, it was already supposed to be done early two thousand twenty-five, I think was.
Yeah.
Was at the latest is what I originally heard.
Take two thousand twenty-six with a huge grain of salt.
Right.
Another issue that has sort of come up on people's minds has been the dam. I think it's because people are just seeing a lot of signs out and. I mean, if somebody commented recently, is there something about the dam on the ballot this cycle and there isn't, but they're working to get signatures to put it on the ballot.
Right, and they really can't put it on the ballot until, like, the residents can't really put it on the ballot to protest the decision until the decision gets made.
Right.
And then they can hit the ground running potentially. It's a, it's, but they're, they're already organized and they're already active and getting, getting people. Getting, letting people know what's going on and, but I don't think Celine City Council has, is even. Although there's a couple councillors who I suspect by what they post. They've already made up their mind on this, but some of, I think there's a lot of people, including the mayor, and maybe I'm wrong. But I think he doesn't want to. I, I think he, I think it's a tough one for him because he's got friends who have some of those homes that overlook the pond and that's a, that's a really. I don't know how you make, that's a gutsy call. You got to really believe in what you're doing. And, and I think it's really hard to know because it does seem, it does seem easy. It could be easily an issue that you kick down the can down the road for a while without really facing the piper. And face, I mean, honestly, there have been less, less important issues that have been kicked down the road for a while. So, do you have an opinion at this point?
For me, it is all about the financial aspect of it, you know, we've gotten rough estimates that it would cost roughly ten million to get rid of it completely upfront. And then it would cost like roughly two to three million to repair it upfront.
Yeah.
Now, of course, they say that there is going to be state grants that can be given to the city for removal of dams. I'm not entirely sure what those numbers look like as of this moment.
Right.
And I know everybody like about the studies. I'm the first to say, if we're going to do something, do it. Don't just sit there talking about it. But especially like during changes in administrations.
Yeah.
Like we've had at the federal government and state government, we need to sort of reevaluate how much we're actually going to be getting because forty-six to forty-nine percent. A Michigan state budget is funded by the federal government. So we need to know, okay, is there going to even be money for, you know, school lunches, let alone a dam removal? And I mean, the federal government's in a shutdown right now, so who knows how long that could be before, before we figure that situation out. So.
Yeah, so it's a pragmatic approach to, to this issue. How about the Davenport House?
Yeah, for me, for me at this moment, I love the house. It's very gorgeous, but the city can't even maintain the assets that it has currently. Taking on another one is not a good idea.
Yeah, and the, the strange thing is, is everybody knows that house, right? And we all love to drive by and see it. It'd be a shame if it was gone, but not a lot of us have ever really experienced anything about it, so it's not like it. It'd be that big of a loss in some way, you know, so.
Yeah, and I mean, there's a completely identical house behind it.
Right, yeah, that's true.
So we have the Curtis Mansion, the Davenport House. And my, my family, my grandmother's mother or mother-in-law was actually the maid of Davenport.
Really?
Who's the owner of the bank. And so she knew Curtis when he first came to town. And Davenport like gave him a job at the bank and then when he passed, he left Curtis all of his fortune, so.
Hey, one of the questions I ask people, there is the issue of. I think there's a new city policy that says transgender people are required to use the bathroom they identify with at the rec center. And I wonder what you think of that and well, I'll wait for your answer on that.
So for me, coming from a place of my own body dysmorphia, I can't sort of speak on trans people because I'm not trans myself. But coming from that sort of aspect of having that sort of body dysmorphia and feeling like your body is against you. I know that when I, whenever I'm in that type of vulnerable situation, all I want to do is get what I need to get done and get out.
Right. I think there's a lot of people who feel like that in dressing rooms, to be honest with you.
Yeah, so, so for me, it's like whatever makes you feel comfortable and the most like yourself, especially in my situation right now where. I'm actually taking testosterone and it was a nightmare to try and get that prescribed, so I can only imagine. How difficult it is for the trans community right now to, to possibly get those, those types of gender-affirming care substances that they want. And so whatever makes them feel comfortable and most like themselves is what I support.
Okay, but so my question is, for the, for the sixty-year-old woman. With their grandchildren in the, in the dressing room, who doesn't feel comfortable with that, what's your message to them? I don't know, it's just not an easy question, to be honest with you.
Yeah, it's definitely not easy. I mean, the, the situation was already dealt with at the city council, so I mean, at this point, it's sort of already settled, but. I would say, you know, everybody just wants to mind their own business. I know people that are not trans and there are trans that just want to mind their own business, get what they need done and, and get it out, so that's sort of what I would. Would tell them would be, you know. Live and let live and. You know, people, you know, whatever makes people feel most comfortable and if you're not comfortable with that, then that's okay. But you have to respect other people's rights as well.
It, it's, it's a, it's a challenging issue. I mean. I'm personally for treating people the way they want to be treated, right? And just to be nice, even if, but I don't necessarily agree with the idea that. Somebody is a certain gender because they say so, you know, that's. And, and if you make me believe that, I kind of resent that, you know, if you tell me I have to, I have to agree with that or I'm this or that. That, that's, that's where my real pushback comes from. What are your top, what's, what's your top issue that we haven't already talked about?
Affordability.
Yeah, well, yeah, we kind of talked about, you've hinted that, that on two or three issues. So what can be done for real? What, I mean, we talk about, what, let me ask, just tell me, what can really be done here?
So I mean, this is not just a Celine issue. I mean, this is happening countrywide.
Especially Washington County in Michigan.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, like, the development that's going out in several places, specifically the one in Ann Arbor Celine Road and Water Works. I mean, this is sort of what I learned recently when speaking to the city manager is that. Once a contractor or developer get their hands on a parcel of land. Whatever it's zoned as, as long as they adhere to zoning restrictions, they can essentially build whatever they want. So if something is zoned as residential, they can build anything from. Like affordable housing that people can actually afford and to live in for first-time home buyers or for senior residents wanting to downsize. To these luxury condominium rental units that is more often what they build because we have been treating. We have been treating like living situations as investments instead of like being for living. And so when we build these types of units, we're sort of pricing people out of being able to afford an actual house and I'm definitely for. Wanting people to, I'm wanting people to own their home. I am sick of the renting. I've seen the nightmares of renting and what it's like living under a sort of slumlord type in housing. I mean, I know that there are people in the city that are dealing with that situation right now.
The city tried to take a heavy hand with some of the landlords.
Yeah.
The corporate landlords, really.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, absolutely. So, so I'm trying to sort of, I want the city to invest more in actual homes that people can buy. And own and live in themselves, but it seems as though not just Celine, but everywhere has been taking more of a. Investment-first, living-after approach when it comes to housing and it is unfortunate, but.
Well, and how many people have gone into flip, the flip the house business and stuff like that too, right?
So.
Which is kind of really doesn't match with the idea of housing and homes and all that kind of stuff, but.
Yeah.
But it's a way to make money and there's always a way to make mon- where there's a way to make money, there, there's always going to be some interest.
Yes.
So, but to you, man, I think everyone's a little bit different on that, but, but like what is an affordable house? Like how much is affordable?
So in Celine, it is difficult to say because I mean, we, this is one of the very desirable places to live. So I would say just sort of a rough estimate, I would say three hundred thousand. Would be my rough estimate as like the, the baseline for affordable housing. But the houses that are being built, the new builds that are being built right now, way above that, like that, not even close.
Right, we talked about this the other day. The, I forget the name of the development behind Henry Street across from the cemetery. Was supposed to be affordable housing and they, they, they made the streets narrower, they eliminated on-street parking, they, they kind of broke a lot of these zoning little rules. Gave them breaks to be able to squeeze more units in there with the idea that you're going to drop the price and make them affordable. But even, even now, the, the smallest ones are going for three hundred and eighty thousand.
Yeah, and I mean, I would love to be able to trust developers on, you know, what they say they're going to do because when. City, when the developer who is now building on Celine and Arbor and Water Works first came to council. Yeah, he said that the, the building that's going up there right now was going to be a mix of owned and rented property.
Right, right.
Now that he's already had it and he's starting to build, we're already seeing that now, he tore down that house.
Yeah.
He's now saying it's all going to be luxury rentals, so none of it is going to actually be owned.
Oh, luxury rental, what, three thousand a month?
Yeah, so essentially a mortgage. But I mean, I know people that live in these very expensive new build homes and they tell me, well, I only utilize thirty percent of my house, but it was the only thing that was available when I was looking for a house. So that's what I had to go with. Luckily, they have a career that's able to sustain the mortgage that they probably have, which is very nearly that, like three to four thousand.
I mean, when Danny Very, Levonia Builders, I mean, they built the, the nice homes near Mill Pond Park there where Houghton School used to be. They, I'm, I'm thinking he did the one that's on, on Henry Street there that we're talking about or off the Monroe Street. And when he started, it wasn't that long ago, but my goodness, what, think about how much real estate has changed since two thousand nineteen. It's, it was already kind of on the way up, but then COVID happened and then things just weren't even.
Oh, yeah, people were like paying double, triple asking price, you know, paying like just getting their hands on any house they could and. Because that's what they were told to, you know, do for investment and like it just crashed out and now people are up these huge housing prices.
Let's see what else we got here on. Are you happy with the direction of the city of Celine right now?
In terms of, you know, sort of mindsets and the people coming in, I, I like to have a diverse sort of, you know, population, you know. Having people from all different backgrounds and viewpoints, it, it gives us a full array of the sort of diversity that we have in the city. However, in terms of pricing, that's a different story. I mean, we just talked about that.
Right.
So that direction I'm not happy with. The financial situation of the city I'm not happy with.
What is the key to increasing the diversity here in Celine? Is it, do you, first of all, is that, you, you touched on it, but is it, I just want to ensure, this is what you said, you, that's a, that's a goal of yours. You'd like to see that. More diversity.
Yeah.
Okay, and so how do you do that?
Definitely like building different types of housing developments and making it more affordable for people. You know, of all different walks of life to be able to afford to live here, but that's the key. Live here, not just be here temporarily, not just temporarily in rental units, but like actually start a life here and build a life here, like that's what it was like. And I want to get back to that sort of mindset instead of making it the next Ann Arbor. Where we have all of these high-priced rental properties going up left and right for the transitory population that. Might be here for a few years, but doesn't have any vested long-term interest in wanting to keep, keep the city growing.
Does downtown, this is, I had a couple of questions on here that were sent in by some residents. Does downtown have enough parking? If not, what would you do to create more parking for downtown? And let me also ask you about paid parking downtown. What do you think of that?
For a city like ours, I don't think paid parking is like really issue. Like I don't think that would be great for a city of our size. In terms of enough parking downtown, I would like people to get. Comfortable with being able to walk downtown and feel comfortable doing it. Right now, it is kind of a hazard situation.
Too lazy. I'm not far away. I'm just too lazy. I, I'll, I'll walk downtown for the parade because there's no parking down there or Memorial Day Parade, Christmas Parade. But if I can, if I can drive, I do it.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to build more of those ugly parking structures.
What do you think of? The Kinley Project where they're, where they're doing the. The public space behind Max and Salt Springs and all that.
For me, it's another project that the city is putting money into when we have actual like living issues. That need to be addressed before any beautification happens, like we have brown water, we have, you know, a fire department that is outdated. Luckily, that is changing to a fire-like authority, so we could be seeing some good changes with that, but I mean.
Expensive changes.
Exactly, but then it's like council says, oh, we don't have the money for this, we don't have the money for that, but yet we have the money for a beautification project.
Right, and, and I mean, I, I like to think you can walk and chew gum at the same time. It really depends on what the cost is. A little bit of beautification downtown, it's kind of like a park in a way. It's like investing in a park, a little pocket park. I think it's possible. I think the plan's okay. It's rough though, and there's some politics behind the who owns what that's going to impact that a little bit as well. Here's another question that I'd never got to that was this with Brett. I should have asked him this one. We've had some low-key political scandals. With, with the Fire Board. Last year, I think the mayor was involved with that, with the city manager search and what happened there. How will you hold others accountable on, on city council, whether it's the mayor or anybody else? To sort of help avoid some of these scandals and the bad blood that kind of comes out of these scandals sometimes?
Yeah, I mean, I was talking to definitely some city officials who are, you know, the people that we hire to be entrusted with, you know, maintaining the city. And they said, you know, they see the differences in the different municipalities around us, like they did reference like Pittsfield Township and how they're operating and how everything there is like very transparent and. There's no scandals and like past the Celine border, it's like all that sort of stuff evaporates.
But if you talk to some people, like, there are some people who think there's a lot of nonsense in Pittsfield Township. I don't necessarily agree with them, but. They're at every meeting, recording every meeting and, and all that, so if you, if you're wa- watching and paying attention. You notice things that you don't necessarily see from a little further away.
Yeah, but, but in terms of Celine, like, we hire these people and we entrust them with the operations of the city. And that's sort of what we have to do as elected officials. We are not the hired people. We are not experts in city planning. We are not experts in. Like being a chief of police or a chief of a fire department. We have to trust the people that we hire for these positions and that's how I would, you know. See my role as, you know, not an authority figure that has the right to sort of tell these people what to do. I want to choose the person and entrust them in my decision to.
What's your impression of the city manager, the new city manager, Dan Swallow?
I think he's a nice person.
Yeah.
But as I've said multiple times, there's a difference between nice and good.
Yeah.
Nice people will.
I remember you saying that at the, yeah, library.
There, there are people that will like make you feel content and, and good and that are nice to your face and that are very like personable people, like I'm not. I am as a person in terms of the best fit for Celine and being Celine City Manager. Some of the things that I've talked to him about, I am not very pleased with because, you know, I said. I was talking to him a lot about when I went on the city tour, I was talking to him a lot about, you know, affordable housing and how can we sort of promote those types of things? In the city and he told me, well, how I view housing as bigger is always better.
Bigger housing?
Yeah. So people in my generation and senior residents who want to downsize, that is not what we want to hear.
Right.
And so the fact.
Starter homes, finisher homes.
Yeah, so, so now that we have a city manager who is gung-ho about bigger housing. Or more like multi-units, like, you know, duplexed housing or condominium units. Yeah, it's not.
Several years ago, Mayor Merrill said he wanted to create another, what's that, Mill Pond Manor. And that would be great. There's a, there's a lineup to get in there. I'm getting old enough now where I'm starting to think about it myself a little bit. What else here? We got, we got a question. I thought that was pretty good. Celine compared to some of the neighboring communities. And I've been here for, since two thousand ten, I started working here and I used to drive through it sometimes on my way to Lenawee County for, for work and stuff like that. And, and to be honest, it doesn't feel like, there has been some progress for real, like the, the movie theaters are great.
Oh, yeah.
You know, it's sad we lost Country Market, but the movie theaters are great amenity, you know. There, there have been some good additions downtown and like Salt Springs and I think Drop Top is going to be a good one. But it's basically the same downtown. You take a look at Dexter. Dexter has changed quite a bit. Chelsea has kind of grown quite a bit. What, what's missing from Celine for us to take the next step, do you think, to sort of get our little boom that maybe we need?
Well, I've definitely like sort of talked with a lot of business owners in the local business community and. You know, spending time with them and as well as seeing the clientele that sort of rotates through, whether it be, you know, a food place or otherwise. It, it actually astonished me how many people from neighboring communities and even up towards Ann Arbor. Come down for the different restaurants and the, the food light that we have here. And like with all the options you have in Ann Arbor, you're coming down here. So I do think that having some type, like more restaurant diversity would be very great. For, for people that have different palates or just want to experience something new and I think that would be definitely a big benefit. I mean, that was actually what was voted top for, for. And I think that would be definitely a big benefit. I mean, that was actually what was voted top, uh, for, for what they wanted to see next is another restaurant, and so I think that'd be.
Where was that voted on?
Uh, it was like Celine, uh, Chamber of Commerce, like, was like, where like they like voted about like what people wanna see next and they said another restaurant.
Uh, honestly, you could just keep going with restaurants and people would love it. Now, will they make enough money? You talk to some of the restaurant owners, they say maybe this pod can only go so far.
Right.
Yeah, so, I don't know. How, how about the rec center? That's, that's a big one.
Mm-hmm.
And they had a, a really good meeting on it, uh, a week and a half ago. What's your stance on where we need to go with the rec center?
So it is definitely a tricky issue. I want it to stay a recreational facility. I have lived in places that don't have amenities like rec centers. And you don't know what you have until you lose it, so I would like the amenity of a recreational facility to stay. However, will it be owned by the city or will it be more privatized like a YMCA situation?
Mm-hmm.
We have yet to see the studies, but in my opinion, I don't want the cost burden on residents any longer. It's unsustainable as well. So as of right now, I would like to see what, and if we could have the option of moving it to a YMCA-type situation.
Is there, do you know, has that conversation took place with the YMCA or anybody like that?
Not as of, not from what I've heard, but I would be definitely open to doing that if I was on council.
As much as I love the study they did, I loved the, some of the data they presented, like, I couldn't help but think to myself, this is like Groundhog Day. We've heard this. We've seen this study, uh, to a certain extent and. Why wasn't, why don't we already know this? Shouldn't this have been what the study is?
Yeah, I mean, the study is on top of studies on top of studies.
Right.
If you're gonna do something, do it.
Okay, and, and, uh, do you, are you a member of the rec center?
Uh, I used to be. My family used to be. I went there when I was younger, but.
Like grade three younger?
Yeah.
Okay.
Like that young, but I was also here throughout my like youth as well. We always came back for the summers too.
Yeah.
And, and I, I really enjoyed my time at the rec center, but as of right now, I am not.
Are you a member of any other gym?
Uh, Anytime Fitness, that's in Celine that just opened up.
Where's, which one is that?
Uh, that's out by Walmart.
Okay, yeah.
Um. It's called Anytime Fitness Celine, but it's in Pittsfield Township. Same with the school.
Let me ask you a question and, and some people might wanna answer, some people might not. Who are you voting for besides yourself? I'm assuming that's number one.
Yes, so number one would be me. Second, uh, is my dear friend Mary Widener.
Uh-huh.
Uh, we definitely hold a sort of same viewpoint, so we are the only two candidates that actually still live with our families. Because we can't afford to live.
Mary lives with her family?
Mm-hmm, with her mother. She, she went in that house together with her mother, so.
Okay.
So we are the candidates that wanna represent the people who, you know, can't afford to live on their own or in, or in, are in. Multi-generational households because they're either taking care of their, their aging family or because they can't afford to live on their own.
You know, one of the things when we talk a lot about diversity, equity and inclusion and stuff like that, and one of the things that's really got under my grill. Is, as somebody who came from a blue-collar neighborhood. Had, you know, somebody who rents myself, right?
Mm-hmm.
It's just like. Let's talk about diversity and turn, how many people own their houses on Celine City Council? Seven out of seven. Is that diversity? That's a good, on the other hand, I understand how people say, oh, if you can't, if you can't afford a house, maybe you shouldn't be making decisions for Celine City Council.
Yes, I have heard people say that to me before and I'm like, well, that's precisely the reason why I'm running, because I'd like to own a house.
Yeah, um, it's, uh, it's a, it's one of those things. So Mary, anybody else?
Uh, after her, it's kind of a. Kind of a toss-up.
Yeah.
Between the, the other four. I know that, uh, Jim has been on it before and. Uh, I did hear that he was in favor of keeping the police dispatch system in Celine, which is definitely. Great and I wish that would have stayed.
Yeah, me too.
Definitely something.
I mean, they're, dude, it's a, it's a challenging issue and, and I, I don't wanna, uh. Question the, the police chief, although I kinda do, but she's the police chief. You gotta respect that and. And, uh, she said it was for public safety. Okay.
Yeah.
And, and because, cuz, cuz, cuz when we did have those, like when we had that live, live shooting. At the, what was the Union Hall across from the, uh, Linden Square. It was one dispatcher working the desk, although she was helped by a lot of people, but it was one dispatcher working the desk when. They were fielding calls from everywhere about, it was like, ah, the gun over here, the guy went this way, so. I, I can see, I concede that, you know?
Mm-hmm.
On the other hand, I also know that they're getting caught, they're getting help from Metro Dispatch right away anyway, so it's.
Right.
It is what it is. Um, let's, let's kinda. Why should people vote for you?
Oh, well, because I'm definitely, uh, a firm advocate in, like, the right to sort of own your home.
Right.
I, I want to make sure Celine remains affordable for all generations.
Mm-hmm.
And that people feel comfortable and feel like Celine is a welcoming city. That, that wants to and encourages growth and development, but, but that's geared towards people first, not profits.
Mm-hmm.
So these are all the things that I sort of look for. In, in a candidate that I vote for myself.
Yeah.
Um, I want somebody that is not going to claim to have all the answers, but somebody that. Wants and is actually interested in hearing what, what different viewpoints are on issues before making the decision. But also somebody that is able to make those decisions when it comes down to it and doesn't just study after study after study.
Yeah.
We have to come to a decision at some point.
That was a question I was gonna ask. I'm glad you brought that up. So we'll leave it there. It was great talking with you and, uh, good luck on Tuesday. And, uh, beyond that, obviously, too.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you so much.